Thank you, and I would like to call to order the Town of McCandless Meeting of Town Council for June 27, 2022.
Can we have a head nod for the appointment of Trish Plunin as President of the Town?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Singer. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And in the absence of President Tarrell, I will share his statement that he always shares with us at the beginning of the meetings, which is, "We will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect, because in the end, we're all neighbors." At this time, I'd like to start with a few announcements. First of all, I would like to welcome Mr. Chris Dell, who is our new chief of the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority. Mr. Dell, if you don't mind stepping up and saying hello.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity. It was funny. I visited Tricia this afternoon, and I said, "Well, when's the next meeting?" And she said, "What, tonight? 7:30." Okay, well, that's great. So glad to be here. I'm new to the North Hills. I'm a South Hills boy forever. So looking forward to learning the area, looking forward to servicing the community. I've been knowing a lot about McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance for a number of years. I'm not new to the ambulance business. So it's been definitely a pleasure. I've been on the job now for four full days. But in that short period of time, it's definitely been a pleasure to work with the personnel that are there and see the organization that is. And I look forward to the opportunity to work with all of you to continue to make the organization that much better. So I'm easy to reach. I'm at the ambulance station. Tricia has my contact information. Glad to be of service in any way that I can to all of you.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, Jacob. And I also want to announce a few things happening in our town in the coming months. First, on July 21st, the Heritage Center will be presenting a history of Ross Park Mall. And also moving on to August, August 2nd, market calendar for our National Night Out event. This is the second year the Town of McCandless will be holding this event. It will be held with our fleece department in coordination with our volunteer fire communities, EMS, and others. It's a very fun evening for all ages, and I look forward to seeing you all there. And finally, the next date to remember is September 10th for our Town of McCandless Community Day. And we will again have our car cruises and fireworks. And we can look forward to performances by Chris Jamison and the Allegheny Brass Band. It should be a great day, and I hope to see everybody there. And if there's no further announcements from council, at this time, I would like to welcome public comment on agenda items only.
We do have one person waiting for public comments.
Okay, so it's tradition to accept public comment from anyone in the room if there's no one in the room. At this time, if we would like to open it up to those joining us on Zoom.
This is Paul Heckman, 10529 Abbey Lane. I have two comments I'd like to make tonight. The first considers is considering the development status report on the Zititis Lot. They've got an open trench. It says they've started construction, but they've had an open trench in the middle of the field now for probably something like a week. There's nothing around that trench in the way of safeguards to keep the children that go over and play basketball on the paved part of the property over there from going over there and climbing into that trench. It's not extremely deep, but are there any requirements to do on a construction site to just leave an open trench in that condition? My second point is, as regards the ridge plan for consideration later this evening, the response that the developer will pay a fee in lieu of providing a recreational area, living in a community that has another community next to it that apparently had that wave of the recreation area for fee in lieu, those children now play in our property, climbing our trees and making a mess in our yards because they don't have a place to play over there. And if you're having a neighborhood with children in it, I would think especially when it's somewhat isolated like this, that not having a place for those children to play safely leads to them either being on someone else's property or going into some other part of the area that's probably not the best place for them to be playing. That's all I have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heckman. Sir, would you like to approach the mic, please? If you would, please state your name and your address.
My name's Gary Letterer. I live at 70 Sarver Lane. I just want to reiterate my concerns that have been stated at this hearing about ridge development, about the storm drain runoff. That storm runoff is going to go to retention pond almost directly above my house. And the water that exited it is going to be allowed to flow directly onto private property. So I don't see how you're allowed, somebody don't, all the storm runoff from that development, on a private property. It's owned by West Van Par. And I've had some discussions with the personnel working at that site. They've always had trouble with water creeping up towards their equipment, and it's going to get worse. They complained about the growth of vegetation on inside the fencing for their substation, which is not allowed. They spray it all the time, and it keeps growing back because the water keeps coming up to a certain level. And the second item I have was the digging of that retention pond at that stone quarry. I asked if there's going to be a blast in that close to my house, just less than 400 feet away. Most of the blasts have been within 200 feet of my house. I, they said, "There's going to be no blasting." I would like to get it on the record that there's no blasting adjacent to my house. It's a, I wanted to reiterate, but I already said it.
Thank you, Mr. Letter. Any more public comment on agenda items? Saying none, we will now open the public hearing regarding application for intermunicipal liquor license transfer to First Watch Restaurants Incorporated for location at 9176 Covenant Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15237. At this time, if we could ask the advocate to please join us.
So. My name's Tim.
She's talented. Okay, thank you, sir.
My name's Tim Schranko. I'm the Director of Operations for First Watch in Pittsburgh Market. I've been with the company about 13 years now. I've opened all the restaurants in the market. There's seven total in the Pittsburgh Market. The last one I just opened was in South Hills, where there we did open with liquor. That was the first one in the state of Pennsylvania, so familiar now with the whole process. As you can see on our menu, that's our limited time only menu that we hand out to our customers. On the right side there, those are the only alcoholic drinks that we serve. We'll carry tequila, vodka, rum, and champagne. All of it's in a controlled environment where all the liquor will be locked up. Our cooks will actually make batches, and then we portion it into little glass bottles. The server will take the bottle, the glass, and take it to the customer. Has a two-day shelf life, and then at the end of that shelf life, the manager is responsible for dumping it out. All the employees will go through the ramp certification for the Liquor Control Board. We also do serve safe alcohol training for First Watch requirements. And of course, our managers will be going to the, the general manager will go to the class to actually get the liquor license. Any questions? I know you guys have been to First Watch, I hope. Basically, the liquor is the complement of food. People don't, even in South Hills, we have 50 tables. It's the biggest one in the market. I rarely saw people camp out getting sloshed. You know, all our employees are required to card everyone up to 40 years of age. It's a requirement, so yeah. We do get pushback from some customers, like, "Really? You're going to card me?" It's, we're covering, we're covering ourselves.
I'm curious. I'm glad to hear that they will be participating in the ramp training. I'm curious, in today's culture of a lot of turnover in restaurant staff, will you be offering that training on a running basis through the year, or is that going to be just at the opening of this?
Well, the restaurant's been open for seven years now. So like, for instance, when we opened Sienna, everyone was required to do the ramp training. Yet they did not give us a certificate, so we keep on filing the office. They are not allowed to serve alcohol. They're not going to serve alcohol until they get that ramp training. Our server training is typically three days. Most of the people we hired in Sienna already had it from pre-existing jobs. But yes, everyone that, we have a system called DLA, which is Virtual Learning Academy. There's a lot of requirements on it that they have to do before they actually go on the floor.
Thank you.
So our training is pretty strenuous. Most people don't make it because we have some strict guidelines. Our turnover, you know, after COVID was bad. I think we've turned the corner. Most of the restaurants, I'd say, are probably 90, 95% stat. It's more so the kitchen that we have issues with just because of pay. Everyone's competitive now. They're paying whatever they can to get bodies. But servers, servers have been good for us. We've been able to get quality servers. And some of the servers in McCandless have been there since the restaurant opened, so.
Any other questions from council?
Yes, sir.
I don't see Harvey Welbangers.
Like I said, it's very limited. It's basically the complement of food. I will tell you that I've tried every single one of them during the training. They're all very good.
At one time?
What's that? At one time, at one time. A lot of them sell better than others. The Kilo Tonic is very popular. The Pomegranate Sunrise is very popular. But like the cereal, it's an acquired taste. The biggest thing that we sell is the mimosas. We'll go through five, six cases a week alone, just as a champagne.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Would anybody from the public have a comment regarding this here? No one in the room? Is anyone on Zoom? Thank you. And one final time, any comments or questions from council? At this time, we'll close the hearing for the application for intermunicipal liquor license transfer. Thank you, sir.
Do I need to stick around for the vote, or will you contact? How's that work?
I can see.
They'll contact you.
Okay, yeah, the upper St. Clair one, I was the last one on the dock, so. Okay, we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Moving on to agenda item number eight, we have a motion to approve the minutes as we're in our packet. It's time a vote to approve the following minutes. On favor, please respond with the aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Leave that as unanimous. Five of us. Five to zero. Thank you. And now we'll move on to reports of committees. Mr. Casey, if you could lead us through admin and finance, please.
Admin and finance, I think Tricia's here.
I'm here. So you have in your packet the checklisting for $1,120,000 roughly. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Yeah, one question. Page for number 2053, the Bring the Table subscription. That number was kind of jumped out at me.
It's the 13 grand.
Yes, it was 13. Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you.
This is the last year of the contract currently. Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve checklist number five dated May 1st, 2022, to May 31st, 2022, totaling $1,120,000, $1,120,000 and 15,000 dollars and 65 cents estimated each member of council and posted on the board's board and town website. Second.
Any questions? Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, please just go by saying aye.
Aye.
So that is approved, five to zero.
Then the second item under finance is the monthly financial summary and dashboard report. The town continues to perform ahead of last year in revenue as well as below last year in expenditures, which is the right way in both cases. We have within line, we, this month is the big bump in revenue is due to business privilege tax being due on May 15th. In addition to the normal procedures, I attended a conference, the state conference in Hershey. We had a new accounting officer come on board that y'all met in May, Brittany Avrka. We purged records within state guidelines. We you also, we have also participated in a kickoff for the new phone system, which per my manager's report, we anticipate will be in effect by the end of July. The auditors are here this evening. She'll be next on the agenda. If you have any questions on my report, I'm happy to answer them.
No further questions. We can move on to the audit presentation.
Katie, I think we can open her up on that question.
And then Katie, I have RJ with the presentation up, and she's had a share screen so she can pull your slides. This is Katie. She is, I'm going to let her introduce herself.
Thanks, Tricia. It's good to be with you all tonight. I am Katie Yates from Mardeusall, Senior Manager on your audit for the past few years. My first time being at your council meeting, so I just have a short presentation, PowerPoint presentation, put together just to guide the discussion a little. But if you have any questions when I'm done, feel free. We can talk about anything in more detail or further as you wish. But if you can move to the next slide, I believe it discusses, yep, the reports that we issue as part of our audit. And again, we are reporting on the 2021 financial year. So the reports that we issue are financial statements, the DCD report, which is a report that's required to be submitted to the State Department of Community and Economic Development each year by April 1st. The town filed that on March 30th, 2022, so that deadline was met. Also, communication to those charged with governance letter, which I'll go over briefly. That's just a letter to council or, yeah, council, just with some summaries of the audit, any significant items we need to note. And then we also issue management letter, which includes any recommendations we have on any internal control-related matters. So the next slide is all the communications, the significant ones that are in that letter that we issue as part of the audit. It discusses our responsibility under GAS, which is generally accepted auditing standards. Mainly, our responsibility is to express an opinion about whether the town's financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Also, our responsibility is to plan and perform your audit to obtain reasonable, but not absolute assurance that your financials are free from any material misstatement. So that just means we obviously don't and can't look at every single thing, every single transaction that the town has. We, you know, select samples. We have a materiality threshold. We use things like that. As far as any significant disclosures in the notes to the financial statements, those related to pension and OPEP, we consider to be significant. They take up quite a chunk of your footnotes and everything, and there's required to be disclosed related to both of those plans. We didn't have any difficulties in performing and completing our audit. We received all of the items that we requested. All of our questions were answered appropriately and timely, and we really appreciate that. It was a very smooth process this year. We did not have any material misstatements, so that means we didn't have any significant audit adjustments. The financial information that we received from the town was fairly stated. We didn't have to come in and make a lot of adjustments to make it materially accurate or presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We didn't have any disagreements with management on any accounting, reporting, or auditing matters. And as far as we know, you did not consult with any other accountants. This would be similar to obtaining a second opinion on something because you didn't agree with our opinion. So the next slide just includes our independent auditors report. As I mentioned, our responsibility as your auditors is to issue an opinion. So on the financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. I should note the financial statements are dated for June 2nd. That is when they were issued final. And the DCD report was also unmodified in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting that DCD requires for their report. So unmodified means that's good. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give on your financial information. So that's the type of opinion that you'd want to receive. The next slide is just some financial highlights to highlight for you. Overall, for your funds, all your funds, except for any pension-related information that's reported separately, but you had a positive change in fund balance at the end of December 2021 of just over 2.5 million. The general fund, fund balance was almost 11.1 million. You could see 9.7 million of that is unassigned, so that's a healthy fund balance. For your police pension plan, you had a net pension asset at the end of the year of almost 2.9 million, so it was overfunded. 114.71% funded. That's good. The non-uniformed employees pension plan, that one had a liability of about 157,000, which does calculate to underfunded, but that's a very small liability. There's only two participants in that plan. It's closed. So as you can see from the general fund, financial highlights above, if you had to pay that liability, you obviously could. So I don't think that's an issue there. But does anybody have any questions or anything you wanted to discuss further related to the audit?
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, guys.
Good job, Katie.
Thank you.
We will move on to, this is a new feature of our council meetings, which is our communications report. So we would like to welcome our Communications Director, Mr. John Bajarski via Zoom to speak on his behalf.
We'll let John in real quick.
Welcome, John. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. Okay, the report, for the most part, speaks for itself. Just a couple of things to note right now. You've probably noticed as of late and in the coming months, we do have a lot of public events and activities going on right now. So it's actually been very fruitful as far as social media response and postings and everything like that. And another quick thing to note that's not in the report, we do have slides playing in the lobby again. We have a fire stick now. It's a much nicer new system. The old one, we used pre-code, which is just a regular old USB stick. It was very difficult to actually use. So this is a major improvement as far as that. Other than that, does anyone have any questions?
If I may have a question. I appreciate your report, and I'm curious, as we move forward month to month, will we have some sort of measurability? Looking, for example, like, like we mentioned, that the McCandless and me contract is going to be with another year on that so that we know what we're spending our money and our focus on, to see what is actually getting to our residents in terms of information.
As far as reach and such, or just user base reach and everything like that?
Yes, so it might, so knowing, you know, when you put a certain type of that out, you know, measuring the hits on or the likes on Facebook or the shares, et cetera, is that going to be measured?
Yeah, that should be able to add. We can track that from month to month, and we can also, particularly McCandless and me does have very rich, it has a lot of statistics we can pull and use from that. The website has that as well, so that can definitely be added to the report.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Okay, and moving on to our liaison reports, McCandless Industrial Development Authority.
I don't think we've had a meeting this month yet.
There is not a next scheduled meeting. They're only scheduled as needed, and so I just checked, and right now we do not have the next one scheduled.
So thank you. And moving on, North Hills Council of Governments, Mr. Tar acts on behalf of council there, and I believe they had no meeting this month.
Correct. They need quarterly.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask if there's any public comment on administration or finance committee items? And anything? Thank you. Thank you. And so now we can move on to the Planning and Zoning Committee. Councilman Singer, please.
Sure. If we can have the planning director's report, please.
So as usual, you have the full written report in your packet. We have the ridge development, which is possibly known to some of you as the Marlowe property over the years. There is going to be a presentation on that fully later in the agenda, so unless there are any very, you know, administrative questions, I'll hold the comments on that until we get to that particular section of the agenda. But other than that, there were a couple minor subdivisions that were also reviewed at the planning commission this past month. One of them, which was off of, I believe it was Harmony Road in Willoughby, was actually withdrawn because there were some continuing concerns about grading of the driveways, utility connections, bonding, things like that. So the applicant is going to the back, essentially, get a couple of ducks in a row, and then resubmit. So you've seen that a couple of times at planning and research agendas. That's now coming off the table for now. We also have a subdivision, just one single lot, so a simple subdivision off of Fox Road. We're expecting that that should get out with the planning commission in this July meeting next week and then come to you all on July 11th, because that's the meeting that I'll be attending next month instead of like this. Other than that, there's also a written report out for the June 23rd open house event, which you all have been hearing me yelling about for the last couple of months. So it was actually a really great turnout. The consultants were really, really pleased with, you know, the amount of people that we had there, a lot of great conversations that we had. There is also a round, there are also a couple of roundup posts on McCandless and me. We got one out with a few photos the day after, and then the consultants have also added presentation slides that they gave towards the beginning of the event. And there is also a full video replay because we livestreamed it to Facebook. So speaking of some communication stats included in the written report are the number of hits that we've had on the McCandless and me page up to this point, you know, different types of users, we break the stats down, as well as a couple pieces of information about like, you know, how many views we have on livestream, things like that. So yeah, excited for the next phase. We got some really good feedback. Happy to answer any questions.
Have a question. Okay, and correct it from wrong. I didn't hear exactly the way I started with, but Mr. Heckman mentioned the ridge plan, and he said something about playground?
Oh, yes. So great question. So our code allows developers to elect to pay a fee in lieu per unit of the development. The way that, and this is something that definitely is going to be addressed in, you know, the modernization project. But so it was set based on, I believe, a budget that might have been 1994, I want to say. So I think that it's 400 a pop for the fee in lieu. The other option that developers are given are to essentially build a playground that is then given over to the town to own. Though it's my understanding that that has become more common to pay the fee in lieu because the town over the years was not interested in owning individual playgrounds and neighborhoods. So that's just become more common.
So in other words, they would put the playground in, but they So in other words, they would put the playground in, but they wouldn't maintain it.
It was, it was to be dedicated to town membership, yes. Um, so it's my understanding that that was not the preference um over the last couple of decades.
Could you speak up?
Sure, what what part do you want me to?
I can hear that last thing.
Sorry, I can, I, the mic, I don't want to.
Will there be an HOA in that plan?
Um, yes, yes.
So the HOA couldn't take over that playground and be responsible for it?
Well, so that's not how the code is written, I mean, we have made one exception, at least since I've been here. Kind of again, just kind of working with what we have on the books. Where we had the Thompson Run Road Apartments, they put in a walking trail around the property. As well as I think maybe they're doing a watching court and pavilion, something like that, so that satisfied their requirement for the urban space recreation. But they're the only one, at least since I've been here, that didn't elect to pay the fee instead. Originally, when this plan came through, they were proposing a pedestrian access and walking trail curving sort of around the back of the property. Going down towards the location, the detention pond is proposed, but that was also being proposed. Instead of potentially constructing an external sidewalk along the Piper Hill section of Perry Highway. When it was determined that the planning commission was not feeling too warm and fuzzy about that modification request, they withdrew it. Removed the pedestrian access trail and elected to do fee in lieu.
As far as a trail?
I'm sorry, what?
As far as a trail?
Uh, yes, so that that could count as part of, like, you can either have what's called passive or active recreation. Which I guess passive would be like a little park area that you could sit out, you know, on a bench or something like that, active could be walking, sports area, anything like that, so. That wouldn't have covered the whole entire requirement, but it could have been a credit towards that.
So. How would we be able to talk with an HOA about possibility of if we decided we wanted to do a playground? About taking over the responsibility of that instead of the township?
Yeah, so I think we need, no, I would say I think we need to amend the code, but we're already on that train. So um, it's something that certainly will be addressed in the project. But, you know, do you have any facts? You look like you've.
We can always ask the developer if they would agree um and were to put in said playground that dedicated not to the town but to the HOA. You know, even though the code may only give us a few options, you can always.
Do a modification request.
Right, what's the worst that could happen?
Right, right.
It just, I I had to say that because we do need things for our children. And, you know, we're, we're, we have North Park, we're trying to get more things and more activities for our kids. At the same time, we don't want to have to take on any more responsibility or liability for things like that, but if there's an HOA, HOA that's going to be new, it might be. A good time to see if we couldn't do that.
Sure.
We'll side with that.
Don't worry, it is very specifically on the priority list for the current update.
I was going to ask that, that number, that in lieu of number, you've mentioned that it's based on a nineteen ninety four.
I want to say it's ninety four, I mean, I'd have to look at it, but I know it's early nineties.
Four hundred is so minimal.
Yes, it was um, if if we go with even this type of language in the code with the fee in lieu, I would strongly recommend that we set it by resolution annually. Rather than codify it with a hard number.
Because these, these properties will likely be to the nine hundreds.
It seems the intention was to adjust it based on budget figures every year, but that just didn't.
Is it in the current fee schedule? I don't remember seeing it in a.
No, it wouldn't be because it's it's not.
Like you could have written the code to say it's four hundred dollars and then it will increase by whatever per year, or you could say in the code that it will be set by a fee resolution.
Right, which that would be my recommendation as we get there.
I I I like that approach.
Are there any other questions for the planning director? Okay, pending no more questions, liaison reports, planning commission. I'm the alternate, uh, the minutes and agendas and all the information was attached to the packet. And I believe RJ answered most of those questions. Anything else for planning commission? Pending none, uh, zoning hearing board.
The April and May minutes are in the packet for the zoning hearing board, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer.
Pending no questions, uh, we'll open to public comments on planning and zoning committee items, anyone in the crowd? Anyone online? That is all we have for planning and zoning.
Thank you. Moving on to our recreation committee reports, Councilwoman Schi- Schweiger, if you could lead us through that, please.
Yep, so first up is Activities Advisory Committee. I guess we kind of pretty much already covered the community day coming up and the National Night Out. Um, our Activities Advisory Committee meeting should be next week on July fourth, but because of holiday, it is moved to July seventh. Are there any questions or comments?
Ms. Schweiger, I'm curious how the um, the Thursday Treks and the yoga has, have you been seeing good resident response to those activities?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, what'd you say?
Curious about the Thursday Treks and the yoga classes, unfortunately, I've not been able to fit them into my schedule, I'm curious if you've seen good response for those activities.
Oh, are talking about the ones for Carolyn and and depth program for the yoga, I could, I could hardly hear you, but from what I've heard, those are going really well. The walks and the yogas on Saturdays are well attended, so if that's what you're asking, it's sorry, it's hard to hear on the road, that's, it's going well from what I've been told.
The first yoga had eleven participants, um, I was not able to attend the Saturdays. But they will go on for the next two Saturdays, so July second and ninth at nine AM at Devlin Park. And then Thursday, the Thursday Treks kick off. It's, I don't know the time, it's specifically at ten, and they go from the fitness court up up above.
Yeah, I'm really happy to see the Activities Advisory Committee with these um ongoing programs, but thank you.
Okay, so up next is the, I'm sorry, guys, up next is the Finance Development Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center, Patricia.
Thank you, uh, thanks, uh, the minutes are in the packet, but also I would like to invite Abby up, she would like to give a very brief update. On um how's our strategic planning is going with the Heritage Center Committee.
Evening, everyone. Our strategic planning is underway, we've had two meetings thus far in the past month. We have had meals provided in kind from DeBella's, um, valuing two hundred and eighty dollars for lunch. And BJ's wholesale provided a hundred dollars in lunch for us last week. We've also gotten a hundred and sixty five dollars um in kind from Staples for supplies, so. Joe's lined up donors to provide a meal for us for all of our committee meetings. The last two meetings that we've had, we've had nine committee members each um for the meetings on June twelfth and the twenty sixth. The members of the committee make up an array of people from the community, from business members, educators, school board members, and some members of council. We've had some enlightening and exciting conversations about where we see the Heritage Center going. And at this point, we've identified our stakeholders, conducted interviews with them, and discussed our personal visions for the Heritage Center. At our next meeting, we will have compiled these visions and set forward a plan to implement those plans. Um, our next meeting is July tenth, we'll also meet on the twenty fourth and have a one-hour wrap-up session on August seventh. So more details in a full report will be given at the conclusion of the process. Small Games of Chance license was issued from the county, so thank you for that resolution, which enabled us to apply for this license. It will open the doors for us to fundraise more often and in better ways. This past month, we had our Westview Memories event on June fourteenth with a presentation and a book signing from author Mike Funyak. We asked people to register in advance online and had a great um response, so much so that we had to add a second presentation. Our capacity is only forty eight people and we filled up to, I believe it was forty or forty-five um for the, for the registration, so we added a second one. In total, we had fifty-four people, twenty-two for the first presentation and thirty-two for the second. We had ninety-four dollars in cash donations given in through the donation buckets and some people bought some books as well. We've seen that huge improvements in visitations, uh, growth in our numbers, not only for special events, but for visitors throughout the week during our regular hours. We're working on group tours and outreach, working to develop a tour for school-age kids and for adults, new families. New staff members for NA School District and um we want to feel, we want to make new residents to the area feel welcome. And learn more about the community that we live in. I've been asked to speak at the American Association of University Women, the North Hills Pittsburgh branch in September. And they will pay a fifty dollar honorarium uh to the Heritage Center for that uh presentation. We're also putting together a proposal to the NA School District to have the second graders come and take their field trip. To the Heritage Center this year rather than going to Old Economy Village, which is I think where they currently go as a part of their curriculum in the second grade. It's to learn about um their community and social studies, so what better place to learn about it than at the Heritage Center? Um, we've been working diligently on our file organization, I met with John Schalkowski from the Odd and Mysterious Pittsburgh. A few times to examine our local township documents, he was very excited to see the treasures that we have there. And John gave us some great insights on some photos and documents that we have, um, which may be considered rare or valuable. That are relevant to the history of the Greater North Hills area. We're also building relationships through John and the Western Historical Society and the Pine Historical Society. To build relationships with other local societies too. So we have some upcoming events, um, as Trish mentioned earlier, Thursday, July twenty first, we're having History of Ross Park Mall. Presented by Scott Barrett, who was uh Joe Bullock's grandson, actually. Joe Bullock, no, sorry, Joe Hall got in touch with um the representatives from Simon Properties and they're providing us with. Historic archival photographs from whenever the mall first opened. And some of their special events they've had. We plan to have some involvement in National Night Out and Community Day, so stay tuned for those. And um Trish had a fantastic idea to do a Friends of North Park Photography Gala fundraiser event sometime this fall. So I'll, I reached out to the Activities Committee and we'll do that in conjunction with them, hopefully. In the, in September, I think we decided. So um, the golf outing, the second one is already scheduled for Friday, October seventh, and that is the same weekend as NA's homecoming, so we're hoping to. Attract some, some of those alumni um to the golf outing as well. And we'll be having our notorious North Hills uh presentation at North Park at the end of October. It's kind of the, the scary illustrious stories of, you know. The not-so-popular part of the North Hills history um in coordination with Halloween, so. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to make a comment, um, you know, it seems to be under your leadership and with your board's help, you know, the, the program has dramass dramatically increased. It's wonderful to see that, um, you know, the amount of people visiting, your numbers are up, it, it just, it speaks very well to, to your leadership. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
It's great to hear such qualities coming through and I appreciate the updates here, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for that feedback, we're all really excited about what we've been doing, so, and it shows, so, thank you for that.
Thank you, Abby, for your presentation. Are there any public comments at this point? They can't see the room, if there's none, this concludes the Recreation Committee meeting.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Schweiger. Now, uh, moving on to um our Town Managers Report, Ms. Great House?
The uh Managers Report is in the packet, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, I do want to mention. Because it's ongoing that the police officer application is online, it's on the town website, it's been posted. In the New Pittsburgh Courier, policeone.com, indeed.com, it's on all of our social media. We have a Q and A on McCandless and me, if anyone has questions about the process. It's been up on the McCandless Crossing electronic sign, we've had it on various billboards, including the Police Academies. Um, we've only had uh four applicants so far, but the application period is expected to close on July fifteenth. I also want to say a special thank you to Officer Paul Taylor, we finalized his early retirement on June fifteenth. He had twenty-three years of service to the town, I had a typo in the report, so, thank you to Paul.
Thank you to Officer, um, sorry, Taylor, Taylor, thank you for your service to our town, uh, moving on to town twenty-third.
My report was also part of the packet and I'm happy to answer any questions, although probably more appropriate for executive session. And you can always call or email if you have any questions about my report.
It's long view, the very last road in your pack.
Okay.
Type, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Okay, now we'll move on to oil business, um, I know this is something that affects every one of our residents here in the town, so it's a critical issue and we appreciate. Ms. Great House, uh, looking into this, Russ, if you would like to.
We've communicated um in conjunction with Ohio Township, who are contracted with, with Waste Management. With Mike Chris, who is the owner, on some issues that we've encountered over the last few weeks. Since the holiday with the delay and pickups, et cetera. The town did assess them against the escrow of roughly twenty-nine hundred dollars for missed pickups. They have put a path forward to additional training for the new, they have a lot of new drivers, like most businesses um in the area. And so ongoing, they're trying to put um, multi, you know, two drivers in a truck to help with training purposes. As well as other issues that they're trying to address for customer service, so we'll continue to monitor the, the process um and hopefully uh we'll continue to see improvement.
Trish, was the sheets situation brought up to them about getting there before eight o'clock?
That had been previously addressed with them and so that should be corrected, they were also penalized for that back in, I believe, December. So right, this particular instance was for a number of missed pickups residentially. And they have a lot of new drivers who in some cases missed whole development plans, um, and so they had to go back over a course of three to four days. So that's what we tried to address in this particular instance. Like I said, I mentioned other idea opportunities where they could make improvements and we'll continue to assess those as they proceed.
And if a resident has an issue with trash pickup, they should call directly to the town.
They should contact the town as well as customer service with Waste Management. Joanne at the front desk handles all of our Waste Management calls, she communicates with the driver, um, the driver coordinator. Um, and so if you let her know, you know, where you're located, how late the pickup was. And then eventually, if it is picked up, when it's picked up, we can better assess how the contractor is uh providing service.
Thank you. Any further questions about this issue? Okay, so we will now move on to new business. First item in new business is to um consider the Resolution Number Ten. Proving the acquisition and subsequent disposition of some vacant properties.
This is a standard item that occurs occasionally on our, on our agendas. Through the county, we receive notification of a request on vacant property. We do some due diligence on staff through planning as well as the town attorney, and it's just a housekeeping item to pass this resolution on our.
I have a question on page three, I'm impressed. I'm sorry, it's from.
Their application.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Says estimated appraisal value thirty-three hundred. Then it says good faith deposit three hundred and thirty, and parcel fee three thousand per property, and closing cost five hundred. So are they, it said appraisal value. To me, it looks like it'd be three hundred and thirty dollars, three thousand and five hundred. Or I'm sorry, the three, 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 three hundred and thirty would come out of the three thousand, so it should have been like thirty-five hundred dollars, not seventy-one thirty.
Thirty-three hundred plus the three thirty plus the three thousand plus the five hundred to come up at the seventy-one thirty.
So they pay the estimated?
They pay, they pay both, yes.
That parcel fee, I think the three thousand is a one-time county fee, part of this program, okay, so it's not the, the, the cost of the parcel. The estimated appraisal value is the thirty, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation.
It's, I am a invader of this sort of acquisition, because it's, these are properties that are without receiving any taxes from or any benefit from, and it also helps our communities and neighborhoods to have these properties cared for. So I, I encourage residents to be aware of this, and look into it if they, if they see one. Do we have a motion?
A motion to adopt Tenement Lee, then have resolution Number Ten of twenty-twenty-two, approving that the acquisition and subsequent disposition of parcel of vacant property known as block and lot number nine four six dash K dash two zero seven would be in accord with the comprehensive plan of the municipality.
Happy to second that.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, in opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you. And the next one, if we could quickly summarize, Ms. Greathouse, the liquor license.
Yes, so this is a transfer from Scott Township to McCandless for the public hearing that was held earlier this evening for First Watch. As you saw, there was no public comment during the public hearing. If anyone has any further questions, I believe he is still here.
And maybe, Mr. Corbin, if you could explain why they needed to get a liquor license from Scott Township? Because I know a lot of people not in the industry would, may not understand what this is all about.
Well, there's only so many liquor licenses that are issued in each county, and so there aren't any new ones. And if you want one, you have to find one that's for sale, and, and very rarely do you find one in your own community. So the law requires you to approve any, any liquor license that's being transferred from a different municipality into yours, and that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you. I just know a lot of folks not in this industry would wonder, you know, why we do this.
Yeah, because the state legislature makes it.
And do we have a motion?
I make a motion. Motion to approve a resolution of the town of McCandless County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving the transfer restaurant liquor license number R five six nine two into the town of McCandless from the municipality of Scott Township. Second.
Second.
Mr. Singer had that, and are there any further questions from council? And any opportunity now for any further public comments? Hearing ends. Are those in favor of approving? Please respond with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Question carries, five zero. Thank you, and now we move on to an item that is dear to many of us. The tennis courts here at the town hall grounds and on our campus here. We've been hoping to have these improved for many years now. So, Ms. Greathouse, if you could explain what is happening with that?
So the retrofit for the Devlin Park Tennis and Basketball Courts has been in the budget since my arrival three years ago. Every year, we put it out for bid, and it either comes in slightly over budget, or, in this case, much more over budget. I can tell you that in twenty-twenty-two, we changed the scope based on comments from the public asking for pickleball courts to be added to the plan. So the scope of work that was put out for bid included the retrofit of the tennis courts, as well as the basketball courts, the addition of a pickleball court, actually four pickleball courts in lieu of one of the tennis courts, and the required fencing around all of those structures. The, initially, the budget for this project was at two hundred thousand, funded a hundred thousand dollars by a CITF grant from the state. The remaining budget amount was to come, I believe, from a fund balance transfer from the general fund. The bids came in at three fifty-three, seven hundred. A lot of that is due to the fact that it includes asphalt with the increase in oil costs. That price has gone up, as well as, as I mentioned, the change in scope. I spoke with Superintendent of Public Works, Jeff Shaneman, as well as with Councilman Singer, and I'm going to let him talk a little bit on that. We are anticipating, in order, this project is only going to continue to increase, and it is in dire need of, of repair. And so the proposal, or the recommendation from management, is that as part of a budget amendment in July, we increase the overall budget cost for this project, continue to fund it with additional fund balance from the general funds. You heard tonight when Katie did the audit presentation, we have a very healthy general fund fund balance. In addition to that, one of the projects at Wall Park, the bid also came in over budget. We could potentially use the Wall Park budget in twenty-two and push it into twenty-three and budget additionally for that then, in the next budget cycle. So what's before you tonight is to approve the bid for strictly the tennis court retrofit, basketball court, and pickleball courts at Devlin Park. But in approving this, we need to be aware that come July, there will also have to be additional funds proposed as part of the budget amendment to fund that additional structure.
Do we, do we know how much that is?
The, the bid came in at three fifty-three seven, with an additional twenty square dollars per square yard for any base repair needed. There's also an additional twenty thousand dollars for the chain link fence fabric, so potentially, this.
I think the number, I had, I had sat down and talked to Jeff about this. This has been something, it's been in the books for a long time. There's been a lot of public requests for this. The, the number that's in everyone's mind is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We have it in the budget for two hundred thousand. We're a hundred and eighty thousand dollars short from our currently proposed budget. We do have the money there. I had spoken to Trish about where, what resources it could come from. You know, the bid looks accurate. I've reviewed it personally. I think it's a good value for what we're getting. And I personally think, you know, this is even beyond a programming, a, a, you know, just a type of activity. This is actually an asset that we own. We're improving the tennis courts. We're improving the fencing of that area. Pickleball is a very up-and-coming thing. We've received multiple emails about this in the town, and this is a project that's been on the books prior to me getting involved, you know. And the problem is, we keep kicking this down the road, and it keeps going up and up in cost. It's Public Works opinion. It's my opinion, some of the others, I'm sure. We get this project going now before it continually becomes a problem.
And, and so Trisha proposing that we take the wall, monies from Wall Park?
That's the initial thought, is that we take the expenditure money.
How much is that?
It, Wall is right now in the budget for two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct, but it's, yes.
We might be able to take this one eighty from there, and then?
We can take the expenditure from that, with the funding coming from the general fund fund balance.
Okay, so.
Firstly, I think we have money available that we don't have to take the money away from Wall Park. I think that there's eight hundred and fifty-some kids that play baseball down there, and I think that's a huge disservice to them and their parents. I think we need to fund both of these. I think that we're underfunded on a lot of our, our recreational properties around here. I'd like to find a solution to, to accommodate your request to take care of the Devlin Tennis and Pickleball Courts. And I'd also maybe table the Wall Park, keep those funds, and look for a resolution that's going to, perhaps we don't need as much work at Wall Park. Maybe we don't need to put the conduits for water underneath it or what have you, or maybe there's another way we can accomplish that. I'm all a hundred percent behind funding both of these, and I just throw that out there.
I'm just cautious about the fund balance. You know, we don't know what lies ahead yet, and costs are getting higher and higher. We're taking on this project at Town Hall. We don't know the hidden costs here. So I just caution us about that capital fund balance.
I fully agree with you. I, I trust me, I'm, I'm as cautious as can be with that. My concern is, this is a project we keep putting in the budget every year and pulling back.
I concur, but I, if we could take it, well, how you say it, take from Rob Peter to pay Paul?
Sure.
If we can do that, and then really help the Ball Parks the following year.
Yeah.
I'll see. I think they could, listen, I remember playing stickball with just, without having all the bases and all the glitz and glamour. So if they can get away with it for one more year, I think we're okay. I think the priority should be what hasn't been done, and I think we could take care of the baseball fields and that the following year without having, if we don't have to touch that fund balance, I don't want to. I mean, I just know that everything is not as good as what we think it is, and we have to be very, very, very cautious, because we don't know what our budget's going to look like for next year.
Dr. Rob, I think there's a little piece of the pie that's been left out, and I think that piece of the pie is, I think it was IFPLL that went to the legislator's office and got the grant money to do Wall Park. Therefore, if we take the money that they found and we use it for another project, I think that's an insult.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's not the whole hundred and eighty, right?
We wouldn't be using the funding that was found by, by, they, that is a grant fund that is dedicated to.
Dedicated to that.
But it's only for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that Wall Park bid has also come in well over three hundred thousand.
Okay.
So there will, there will need, either we'll need to be a change in scope, as we just mentioned. But either way, we have to come up with that additional hundred and eighty thousand to fund the CIP project, which I believe what Mayor Duzel reported at nine million dollars of unassigned fund balance, our policy only requires us to have two months right now, which is about two point two million. I'd like us to have closer to six. But that's me as a finance director, so, but that still leaves us a hefty portion on top of the fact that we have the rest of the ARPA money that will be coming into the budget in the next year. So I think it's there. It's one of those things that I want to commit to at least, I recommend that we commit at least to Devlin, and then talk more on this next month, when we bring Wall Park.
But the motion on the table is simply to approve this project. The following month, we will talk about the budget amendment and the upcoming Wall Park issue of that one. So just tonight would be the approval of this, with the understanding we will have a budget amendment to fund this.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from council?
So I will make a motion to award the contract for the town McCandless Tennis Court Reconstruction to CHD Enterprises Inc. This project includes the reconstruction of Devlin Park Basketball Tennis Courts with the addition of four pickleball courts as specified in the spec packet. That includes the total price of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars, the optional work of replacing all trade line fence fabric in disposal, which is sitting at twenty thousand dollars, and optional work at base repair at a twenty-dollar square yard pricing.
Oh, second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions from council? Any public comment? Yes, please.
Please go upstate your name.
Name and address, please.
Owen Stiles on Oak Ridge Drive. So I don't know if this has happened. I don't know how often it does, but I was just wondering, I mean, we have First Watch. We have Trader Joe's. Can we get sponsors for this? I mean, why not? Can you ask sponsors, you know, Lowe's? I mean, I was just thinking, I mean, I know you're, I know it might be funny for someone to put that out, but I'm thinking, why not, you know?
Good idea.
Thank you.
I was pointing at Mr. First Watch.
Thank you for the comment.
I am Joe Wall. I live at two seventy-five Arcadia Drive. I've appeared in front of this body before, as you all know. There are two things. Number one, I wholeheartedly agree that there are sponsorships, opportunities within the township that we can explore, and I would be willing to help the town do that. Secondly, when we talk about Robin Peter Pickleball, and Dr. Rob, do you know how much I respect you and how long I've known you? Don't cheapen any one of these projects. We've done that for a long time in this town. Where we've taken and we've nickel and dimed projects. I'm wholeheartedly, head and shoulders, wholeheartedly behind the project here at the Town Hall. And we do not spend a great deal of money on parks and recreation in this town. And it's because we have relied on North Park. I ask you to look at this, whether you do Wall Park a year from now, and yes, it's my namesake, it's named after my father. Whether you do it next year or the year after, I don't care. We need to do the right things here. We can't nickel and dime anything anymore. Because regardless, whether it's the Heritage Center, whether it's Wall Park, whether it's Vessel Field, these are all town assets, and they're all assets that helped, that help attract people, okay, to our town. So I urge you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. So any comment online? There are no further comment at this time. Are those in favor of approving the contract? Please respond by saying aye. Any opposed? None? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you. Thank you for the participation from our audience members. And moving on to the subdivision of the Ridge Residential Plan. Any further to add? Okay. You have a presentation. If you, please introduce yourself and welcome.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Stephen Victor. Victor Wetzel Associates. This is our first chance to present what we are proposing to do on the ridge to you. We've had three prior meetings with your planning commission. Planning commission did recommend in favor of the plan that we're presenting to you. Also, we've gone through an extensive review with Gateway Engineers, and they have also recommended moving forward with the preliminary plan as we have presented. So as I go through this, if you have questions, feel free to stop me at any point, and be happy to answer more if you want to wait till the end. It's your pleasure. Several points are sort of general in nature to sort of give you the background, and others are more specific things, comments that were brought up in the planning commission meeting. So first slide, please. Next slide, I guess. What you're seeing here is the, it was like Marwa property, a little over twenty acres of property running along Perry Highway, Route nineteen. The location of the property is on the westerly side, so for the orientation for our drawings, north is to the right here, and the, so Wexford would be to our right, and Pine would be to our left, be to the south. The property has fairly significant topographic differentials, and therefore, the access to the site is limited to the very northeasterly corner, where we've shown our driveway curb cut. As you're aware, there is a New Jersey barrier running down the middle of, of the Perry Highway in this location, and so the access to the site will be limited to a right-in, right-out. And that was certainly part of the discussion we had with the planning commission. The plan calls for bringing that right-in, right-out up, run along the ridge line, and terminating at a cul-de-sac, and there would be a total of nineteen single-family lots. We're looking for this to be upscale, in that we've oversized the lots. They're larger than what your zoning requirement is. They're approximately a hundred and five to a hundred and ten feet wide. And the builder for the plan will be Infinity Homes. Infinity typically builds in the seven hundred and fifty thousand and up price point, is what we're looking at here. Of the bright green area would represent the existing vegetation to remain, where grading and activities for setting the benches for the houses would occur. A lot of the site today, though, is currently open anyway, because it was a former, we'll call it estate. It was a stone house that was on the property. It's in. Because it was a former, we'll call it estate, it was a stone house that was on the property. It's in. Terrible shape right now, because it's been baked it for so long, so that will be demoed. In the lower left corners, you're looking at it, the southeasterly corner of the site, the yellow green area. Is a area of common open space. Uh, not so for purposes of traditional open space, meaning, uh, recreation or other, but instead this common area. Uh, owned for purposes of the stormwater matter management. All of the stormwater from our site. Will be directed to that particular location, and that's where we will control the stormwater runoff. Uh, from that, and maybe a subsequent slide will give us a little more detail on that particular point. So, uh, next slide. Uh. Slide may be a little bit confusing for you because we've got this long sliver along Perry Highway. In our original plan, we were going to have a recreational component. That would have a trail that would run from the cul-de-sac area. Down to the southern end of the site where the detention facility is located. And that trail would provide, oh, called pedestrian access. Uh, the planning commission charged us with looking at it in more detail to provide something that would be more available to the public. Specifically, building a sidewalk along Perry Highway. And that's what this is showing in the two strips. The top drawing begins where our entrance is. And, uh, what we have done is we've set aside a, basically about a fifteen foot sliver of common area. Uh, in which this sidewalk can run. Uh. Reason for that is a little bit unique in that these lots along there. Uh. Have frontage on our new street, but also they back onto Perry Highway. If we were to build a sidewalk down there, then the obligation of maintenance on that would fall to those individual homeowners. And we know they're not going out in the middle of a snowstorm or after the snowstorm and maintaining. So the idea here is let's make it common open space. Let's build the sidewalk in the common area. And therefore, the homeowners association can pay someone to keep and maintain that sidewalk. Think also the planning commission was looking at that as be, uh, part of the. Community connectivity. Although there's no other sidewalks to the north of us, hopefully there will be at some point, uh, some extensions. And would have connection to this so that. Such as Forest View, Longview could maybe be interconnected also to this. And the ultimate destination to the south. Uh, in the lower strip drawing, you see the yellow green is the detention facility area. We would end ours at the, at the. Uh, end of our property line there, you'll see Sarver Lane is that, and then on the opposite side of Sarver Lane is the. Power company property, and then beyond that is Vessel Park. So I think the envision that the planning commission had that this would ultimately have that connectivity. I do have a slide that will go in and talk a lot more about stormwater. Again, the, the, the real benefit of the sidewalk here is to provide, uh, a community level connectivity along Perry Highway. Next slide. Uh. One of the things that came out of the discussion and which unfortunately we were only able to get. And respond to today. So what I'm gonna throw to you is something new. Uh, in the course of our discussions, uh. The house that you see off the site, the little square up there, one of those belongs to Mr. And Mrs. Wright here who are in the audience. And they pointed out to us that there are some fairly large trees in the. Corner of our property there at the rear of lots one, two, and three. And, uh, they encouraged us to take a look at those. Next slide. Thank you. Uh. Apologize for the weakness here. It probably should be a little stronger here, but the, the, uh, the green areas labeling. Two fifty-one inch diameter trees that are on our property. And, uh, a twenty-four inch, and I think there was another twenty-four, but there's four significantly large trees. We had done our grading to your ordinance, we kept back away from the property line as required. But those trees are even further into our property. And the grading, as we're showing, and the grading represents the solid dash line, the solid lines there. Would be our proposed grading, goes right to the trees, or just slightly beyond, because they're past the required upper yard area. So as it says right now, they would be taken down. The developer went and looked at those trees and agreed with Mr. Wright that they are certainly worthy of saving. So we have a proposal, and we did submit an application today for a modification on the next slide. And I should point out maybe on that slide back up just one. The town's code allows a two to one cut slope. And a three to one fill slope. That means two foot horizontal to one foot vertical, or three foot horizontal to one foot vertical. So something. Two to ones like this, three to ones like this. We are asking on the next slide. That if we could go to a two and a half to one slope in that area. Then we could preserve the trees. We'd stay more than twenty feet away from those trees. And the impact would be that we would have a slightly steeper slope in our backyard areas. Uh. We think that that's a reasonable trade off on this. And that the procedural step would be to ask for a modification, uh, to allow that change from the. Saldo ordinance.
But that's not until the final. Like not tonight.
We could, we're happy to have that make it a final issue so that we don't have to act on it tonight. And.
It hasn't been reviewed by Gateway, I'm assuming.
No, if, if this was to be considered at this stage, we would take a break.
Yeah, I think it's better in a final.
We, we totally agree, and we're, we're, we would love to see that, that it's just making you aware that when we come in for finals, that, that we would like to do that. And, uh, I, I did have a chance to speak with Mr. Wright this evening, so he's also seen it for the first time as well. But, uh, I think that this works to, uh, preserve those large trees within that area.
And is the slope towards the house or away from the house?
Ours is sloping toward his property. Yes, it's, it's looking away from our houses. Our house is set up here. We're sloping down toward his property with the way it is right now. But instead of at a three to one, it would be at a two and a half to one. Which then means that all of the trees down on the, near the property line would not be impacted by our grading. We could pull it back further. And most importantly, the very large trees would be what would be, uh, critically saved from this.
And we're not gonna have any problem with water going into his property?
No, and, and I'll go into a great deal of detail on that and then just the next slide, so. Okay? All right, next slide. There's a lot of discussion in regards to stormwater. And so the two pictures here. Show you what the engineers refer to as pre-construction, post-construction, or pre and post. And because we have a ridge line. Some of our property flows to the north and west. And some of ours, and the majority of it flows to the east and south toward Perry Highway and towards Sarver Lane. And the pre-development watersheds, and these are all studied in the stormwater management reports. The pre-development watershed area is the green area. And the pink area at the top is the, uh, that second watershed that all flows toward Perry Highway. What we have done in our design, and that's in the post-development scenario. All of the area outlined in the red bold dashed area is where we're doing all of our grading. And the houses would be located within. And, and that water would be collected in that area and routed to the detention facility. So that which was up on the ridge due to grading changes will change, but also those houses that will be on the. Westerly side of the ridge. Will have a storm collection system in their backyards that will pick up the, the downspouts. And the runoff from patios and driveways that would go that direction, although most of the driveways drain back out to the street. So I think there's one more slide. Yeah. Yes. This slide shows the storm water management where the storm sewers would go. So along our street, the paved cul-de-sac area. We have catch basins along the way, and it's pretty common practice to pick up that stormwater. And all of that, even from the Perry Highway intersection all the way to the cul-de-sac, yeah, all of those picked up. And carried to the detention facility in the yellow green area. What we also have is, you'll see a thin blue line, maybe, or Jay, if you can help me here. Running at the rear of lots one through eleven. Is a storm collection system there through a series of inlets and laterals. That will pick up the runoff from the roofs, et cetera. So that water, which today, remember the larger. Uh, watershed area was flowing westerly. This is how we reduce that watershed area. We capture that water instead, wrap it all the way around and take it to the yellow green area. Likewise, on lots nineteen to twelve, if you borrow your little hand there again. We have a storm detention area, so we don't want our water to run directly out onto Route nineteen, because it's lower than. The ridge line area, so we'll pick up that and again, take it to our detention facility. So now, we gather all this water, what do we do with it? Next slide. There are a series of charts. Uh, in the stormwater management report, again, it's all been reviewed by Gateway Engineers. Which talks about the discharges that we have in the precondition. And that which we have in the post-condition. And they also deal with the different storm levels. So from the one-year, two-year, five, ten, twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred year storms. Revity say, I'm gonna refer to the worst storm that we study, the hundred year storm. So. And there's two watersheds. There's, uh, inner, what's called a POI, point of interest. We have watershed, uh, number one and watershed number two. So on watershed number one, which is the one that captures the majority of the water and takes it to the detention facility. The hundred year storm today. Has a. Post-development runoff, a seven point four seven CFS, cubic feet per second. That's how engineers measure the flow of the water leaving the development. If we were to look at the report, the report also tells us what the precondition is. And the precondition runoff for that same smaller watershed is twelve point six nine CFS. The far right-hand column tells you the amount of the reduction that we have. So we've reduced it by fifty-eight point nine percent from its pre to its post. How do we do that? Two things the engineers do. First, there's infiltration. We're required by the code to infiltrate the two, up to the two-year storm. So all the water that's coming from the two-year storm must go into the detention facility, and it must infiltrate into the ground. It does not flow out of it. It's one of the things you'll find different from detention facilities today, a modern facility versus some that you would have in the town that are ten, twenty, or thirty years old. You can go to one of those, it's after any rain or storm, most likely it's not holding any water. Under the new systems, you'll go down there and you will see immediately after a storm, there will be, you know, probably a foot, foot and a half of water in there. And it'll just sit there for a twenty-four hour period and then infiltrate into the ground. Second thing that we do is we reduce the size of the outfall. Currently today, there is a twenty-four inch pipe that carries the water away from this site. We will have a smaller outlet. So from our detention facility, the water can't get out through the hole fast enough, therefore it will fill up. To the point, and then, uh, when it reaches to a certain point, then it'll overflow into the inlet. Within the detention facility and then be carried away. That's the hundred year storm. So up to the hundred year storm, we're holding more water. Very similar, I always make this comparison. It's like your bathtub at home. You fill it up, you pull the plug, it all doesn't run out at once. It takes a long time for it to run out. That's why you have the smaller hole. So this is post watershed number one, post watershed number two, next slide. Uh, this is the, the watershed that is flowing out of our westerly side. That the pre-development storm is ten point four six. That's the CFS running off, she flowing off of our property today. And with the fact that we've, we're not doing any stormwater controls, we've just taken the naturally running water and routed around. So we have reduced that down to three point two four, so we're only allowing thirty-one percent of this water that leaves the site. Uh, on that side of the watershed, uh, to leave the site, so it's a significant two-thirds reduction in what we would see today. So to your question as, uh, what will the impact be on that area? It is a significant reduction in the water. Uh, rate of runoff that we would see coming from this particular site with this stormwater management facility.
I have a question with these numbers, um. The pre-development is obviously with it being an open space of land without, um, you know, non-promable surfaces. When you add these nineteen homes and driveways, and they're going to be large, going to save probably four thousand square foot homes. With their driveways, we're losing a lot of that permeable surface.
Correct.
Does this account for that loss?
It does. There's a, the, the simplest form of stormwater management is called Q equals CIA. Uh, and Q would be your, your runoff coefficients. And, uh, there are coefficients the engineers use. So the runoff rate for a paved surface, your street, our roofs, the patios, et cetera, and they take that in is one hundred percent. If it's a lawn area, it has another percentage. If it's an existing woods, it would have another percentage. So those things are all factored into the calculations to accommodate that. Additional runoff that you, because of we changed the character of the surface. You know, those things are all put in, and that was all reviewed by Gateway.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I'd understand that. Everything, all the runoff will take care, will be taken care of in those. In that area, nothing's gonna run off on the nineteen down to Pine Creek.
All of our water ends up at Pine Creek, and I'll have a slide that will show you that. But we do. If you will see, what we're discharging is less. Than what's discharging today. So if you take our two watersheds together, this one's ten four six, so call it ten. The other one was twelve something, so we have a discharge today, we are discharging, uh, twenty-two CFS off of the site. And with our stormwater, it's three on this one, I think it was seven on the other one, so we're down to ten. So we are, we're discharging at a rate. Half of, or less than half of what was currently coming off today as, as the rate goes. There's nothing we can do to stop the water from getting to Pine Creek. That's where it's gonna go. If your question is, are we discharging anything onto the highway? No, we're not, because we've captured that with the rear yard systems. But it ultimately comes to Perry Highway, I mean, to. To Pine Creek, and the next slide will show you how that works.
I'm just concerned about being a flood zone down there.
Absolutely. Next slide. Thank you. This is an aerial photograph. Uh, and here the orientation is rotated, so north is to the top on this one, and you can see the yellow green, that's our detention facility. And, uh, if we could use your little hand there, RJ, go to the, uh, end of our, actually just down a fraction, there you go. There is an existing storm pipe there today, penned out, installed it. Uh, on our property years ago, that's where a twenty-four inch pipe comes down into Perry Highway. And joins up with another pipe that starts at the other side over in the self-storage facility. And comes underneath Perry Highway like that. Opens up, goes just a few feet, and then closes up again right there where your hand is. There's a pipe there because there's a driveway for, uh, I think the power company, but I'm not sure. No, I mean, isn't, because the power company's got their own driveway the other way, but there's a pipe there for some reason. And then from there on.
It's part of the power company.
It's a part of the power company, again, too. And then from there on, where I've put the big blue arrows, that's all an open drainage system. Uh, in, uh. Layman's, or layman's term, you probably. Uh, in uh, layman's, or layman's term, you probably refer to it as a ditch. If you were the DEP, you'd refer to it as an unnamed tributary to Pine Creek. So when you get down there, on this drawing, we have added some information. And before I go into that, let me just look at the next slide and then we'll back up. This is a copy of the FEMA map. That is called a format. And on it, our property is right under the word flood hazard where that label is. See that? That's our property. Yep, right there. That's our property. Oak Ridge just to the left, you can see their houses. Uh, you can see Sarvo Lane down there, if you'll give us a little, thank you, very good. And uh, the aqua blue area is a zone AE on their maps. Zone AE means that's the hundred-year floodplain. The hatch area in the middle of the, of the aqua blue area. That's identified as the floodway. Floodway is the designated area in which stormwater will be carried in the hundred-year storm. It doesn't mean that it stops there, it just means if everything is clogged in the aqua blue area. That's the space necessary for the floodway to be carried through. Floodway, you can do nothing on. It's just total, almost nothing, total restriction, other than you build a stream, you know. Creek, I mean a runway across it maybe, but uh, you try to avoid any development activity. And the same thing goes with the aqua area, that's where nature wants to spread out and flood out into that area. So I've taken this map and maybe point out to you, if you could, the uh, the power company. Site right there, you can see their pad right there is above the hundred-year storm. And if we could go a little bit to the right of that, down, down into the right, we'll see Vessel Park, keep dropping that, thank you. There's Vessel Park, that's the ball field right there. So you can see, your ball field's not in the hundred-year storm either. Reason is, you've put dirt there. Years ago, when you could get away with putting dirt in the floodplain, you did. That's the same thing with the power company probably did, they did as well to build themselves up above it. So now if we can back up one slide. What I've identified in the fuchsia colored line, that's the, your floodplain area, thank you. Right through there, you can see how it just skirts around Vessel, Vessel Park and then around the power company. And it goes through the backyard area of some of our neighbors' property. And uh, the majority of the floodplain area is all owned by the power company. They own that, I'll call it L-shaped area if we could, yep, down and back to left, that's all the power company's property. And so, and then the heavy black line represents the floodway. Again, the area of which is pristine, you don't touch and that's where the, the major storms are carried through. Except in the peak storms and it'll slop over into the floodplain area. So at the public hearing, there were pu- public meetings with the planning commission, there were comments made that, oh my God. Look what we've done. We have and we will create a huge problem here with what we are doing. And I would say, looking at this, no, this is, this is a naturally occurring system. That the feds have identified through their FEMA maps, this is where the floodplanning to go. If there's wetlands there, you know, if it floods, that's because that's what it's been naturally doing. Well, piqued my curiosity uh, as to what impact we might have on this. So next, I think we're gonna go two more slides. Thank you, right there. We pulled out a USGS map and we said, at the point of interest, right at Vessel Park. Who's uh, what's, who's contributing what to this? The blue area represents that our watershed that is going down and through our twenty-four inch pipe. And we're going there, fifty acres. So it's our property, portion of our property, some of it goes to the backside, but it's our property and then the people across the street. There's fifty acres. Pine Creek watershed at this point is over forty-five hundred acres. We are one ninetieth of the entire watershed. We are not causing any sorts of issues or flooding or wetlands or creating anything in the. Yard of the power company by what we are doing. And as you can see, when we, when we were looking at the two slides back. Our water is going between the power company plant and where your park is. With the naturally flowing unnamed tributary of where our water is going. And as for the numbers that I've shown you, for our portion of it. We have reduced our volumes uh, by over half of our CFS that we are putting out onto the site. So we're very comfortable that we are not creating stormwater issues or stormwater problems. Yes, can we go back to the picture with the little arrows?
That's the one I want to see through. Those are the open trenches, right?
It's a, well, we, we don't like to use trench, but you can say ditch if you want, but it's an unnamed tributary, it's the creek.
Here's a couple of problems I have. First of all, matter of full disclosure, George Wetzel built my dad's house. So.
Uh, well, it has no relationship to us. My business partner is Mike Wetzel.
Okay.
And his family has never been a home builder, so.
The other disclosure is I do live in Oak Ridge and I do talk to all my neighbors, I walk a lot. The problem I have with this is, in the last two years, we've had two utility pools fall down at Vessel. This year we did an inspection and this is a week, two weeks after it stopped raining. They dug holes around all these pools and they immediately all filled up with water. It's a swamp. So your rate of release might be slower. Thank you, appreciate that. However, you're now taking water that went on the northwest side. And you're adding it to the water on the east-south side. So although that your rate of release might be slower, your volume is increasing right above Vessel Field. The other water on, on the backside of your property, the, the bigger green area here today. Flows down the backside and into a retention pond. It's uh, right above this gentleman, right below this gentleman's house. So, or and barn, which that barn never had a problem for two hundred years until they built Oak Ridge. And they made a lot of promises when they built Oak Ridge to this gentleman. And they broke a lot of those promises. One is they wouldn't blast and they blasted. And number two, they were going to control the volume of water and they didn't control the vol- volume of water, it increased. So he's got issues as a result of that. And now we turn around and you're going to say, okay, we're going to take the water off the backside of the hillside. Which will actually probably help him, benefit him. But then you're taking it around and you're putting in a retention pond that, at that retention site, they used to take, there was a quarry. And they used to take the stone out of there to build McKnight Road. And I don't know how infiltration works, I'm not an engineer. But I would think if it's solid enough that you take the stone out of there to build McKnight Road. That it might not infiltrate as much as one thing. So I, I'd like you to address those points if you would.
The infiltration rate has been measured and is part of the stormwater report. So we've gone out, we've done the test at, at the infiltration at the level of our detention basin. So we know that it can infiltrate, it is slow. But there's, there's probably not a place in Western Pennsylvania due to our clay soils that you don't have that same situation. Uh, as to the fact that Oak Ridge's detention facility uh, is not working. To the extent that the downstream owner anticipates it to be, doesn't surprise me in the least. Because that's how those facilities were designed. I believe that's probably at thirty years old.
At least.
Yeah. Uh, McCandless didn't start uh, using stormwater management. Although the Stormwater Management Act was passed in nineteen seventy-eight. I can remember being here in the uh, mid eighties and it was like a new thing. So, and the DEP standards under which we did stormwater management are nowhere near what is required of us today. So doesn't surprise me that it's not functioning all that well.
Will you be doing blasting?
No.
And what if you do?
Uh, I suspect you won't give us a permit. Because we have to have a permit from you and you won't give us one, which we understand.
Okay.
We're not, not asking for, we, but we may have to sit there with a, you know, if, if there need be, we don't believe it's that. What if to sit there and hammer it out? Or we'll have to just sit there and hammer it out?
Well, if our engineers okay with the fact that that will uh, dissipate the water the way it's supposed to, I'll, I'll go with that. But I'm very concerned at the increased volume that you're bringing from the other side of the hill. Is that water, when it dissipates, it has to go somewhere and it's not going to go uphill, it's going to go downhill. If it goes downhill, it's going to go down into Vessel Field.
No, it's not going to go into Vessel Field, it's going to go into the drainage ditch. Because that ditch is currently carrying that water today.
What about the wa- the?
Water table?
Yes.
Your water table's that high, not because of us, but the forty-five hundred acres of the watershed that you're in.
That's what I'm saying, you'll be adding to the water tank.
No, we won't. Not, we're already adding to it. We, we already, we are running off water today at a greater rate than we will after the detention facility. So I don't, I'm not a hydrogeologist and that's the person who probably should be answering your question here. But, and pose that back to Gateway if you wish, but we are. We're, we're not doing anything to Vessel Park relative to your water table. Your water table's that high because you built a park, you came in and put fill on a park, like. Done hundreds and thousands of times across this country and the water table's there. You know, you tried to beat mother nature. She's still going to put water in the ground, so.
I, I, I think the big question is, how much more can Pine Creek watershed ha- handle? I mean, we have this laser trail, right? And now we have this and then we had something else that just recently went in. How much more can it handle?
I, I think there's, let me ask a couple of questions first, if you don't mind, let me come back to you. Uh, first question I have to you, is it a balanced site? Is there, I know this is preliminary, but have you looked at the cubic yard numbers regarding off or bringing anything in?
We are not hauling off or taking any in, it is a balanced site.
Okay, wonderful, great to hear. Uh, my second question is on point source, point charge too, I don't know, I don't have everything on the front of me. The area to the west of the site, um, you are doing grading down to the property line. So that graded area and especially the part we talked about here beginning where we're steeping the slopes from threes to two and halves.
Yes.
There will be grading there. There will be bench drains there, there will be point source discharge from those bench drains. I had concern for those residents, I agree, it's likely not a lot of stormwater. We've removed the bulk of that stormwater towards the front of the site. My question posed to you, you've been in the business long enough. We are going to steepen those slopes from existing grades, we're going to change the vegetation on those slopes. We're going to add French drains, we're going to impact the subsurface water in that area. There's a likelihood at some point, five years down the road, the town receives resident complaints about a change of water course. Whether subterranean, surface area, whatever it may be. Was there ever a thought process to putting in a bypass clean water swirl at the base of that slope? It appears your elevations would be enough to carry it all the way around to the storm pond. Does the pond have enough capacity or is that not even a probability, possibility?
Uh, right between lots seven and eight is the ridge line, if you would. So it runs down the center of the street and it sort of turns right there and runs out of seven, eight or turns and follows toward the cul-de-sac. From the rear of seven and eight down to the rear at lot three, four, that's the lowest point.
Okay.
Is uh, probably an elevation difference of.
Looks to be about eight feet?
No, it's, I think it's more like fifteen to twenty feet. Because you're seeing our proposed contours and don't believe.
Yeah, I'm looking at a, a proposed contour tie-in at about eleven thirty-six at that corner. And then I was looking at the base of your grading at eleven thirty, so I was seeing it as a, a six-foot difference along there. Um, I mean, is there any concerns in the development of, of modifying that hill and allowing that water on that hillside? I mean, your, your, your rate is decreasing, but your flow amounts may increase because of your, your grading changes.
Yeah. With the extent that we've reduced the flow rates by two-thirds. We therefore believe that the volume situation uh, is going to be similar and we could give you that information if that's what you would like to have as well.
I think I'd like, yeah, I'd like to look at that at some point, I'm just, I, again, I, I just. I know a lot of runs downhill and I know it's always run downhill that way, but it's going to be the famous, you touched it last, you know?
You, you mentioned the runoff differential. That area of the site is primarily meadow area, so it's a grass area today. And once we do the slope, whether two and a half or three to one slope, it'll be grass again. Therefore, there, we haven't changed the runoff coefficient within that area. All we've done is dramatically reduce the volume of the slow-footage area of that particular watershed.
Okay, and I, I, forgive me, I haven't done a site visit, but um, you know, it's also, from what I can tell, it's a buffer zone. So I'm sure there are more than, is there any tree plant, I mean, obviously we're in not preliminary. You know, I'm not sure if restoration for that area is simply going to be vegetated grass on a two and a half to slope or if there's a planning plan. I'd assume there's shrubbery and bush there as well, which has different coefficients. So it would be something I would be intrigued on of not just having a simple seeded slope restoration with steep slope mix. I would be intrigued to see the landscaping plan for the restoration of that area as well to help with that coefficients.
I think we could, if, if granted, the two and a half to one modification is part of that time of final. Uh, could incorporate a reforestation plan. That would maybe include a combination of, of trees and trupery as a uh, uh, kickstarting, if you would, for the reforestation.
Okay, and one other note of interest then, I, I know you're doing the backyard store drainage area. Um, and again, I know we're on preliminary, but part of our grading, I'd like to see a top of slope berm. You know, low, low swirl so that that water in the rear yards can't get over that hill. I know we're showing it on the stormwater plan, but when we see that in the grading plan, we'll be looking to make sure. That that water on top of those backyard planes is directed specifically to your yard inlets. And it doesn't allow the ability for it to go over the hill. I know a lot of times that final grading's up to the builders. But I want to make sure that we're not, you know, our watersheds as designed are functioning to that storm system in the same way. So if it, if it requires a top of slope berm, low, low volume swirls, whatever's necessary. I don't want to see additional waters go over that hill towards the Oak Ridge plant, that's all. Please, sir.
Yep.
Those are my comments for now. Um, like I said, I, I do have concerns about springs on that side. Um, you know, that's a natural water course down in Oak Ridge, we can clearly see it in the existing. We know water exists on the side of that hill. There is likely no defined bed and bank in their backyards. Um, but we know water procolates out of that hillside. Um, obviously, once we disturb that ingrading, we may open up additional water sources underground. And that's, that's something stormwater doesn't handle well, I'm sure you would agree. Is, you know, we have springs pop up and the things in, in a construction detail. Your contractor, your, your site development will install French drains, bench drains and those things. But unfortunately, they do concentrate water to a point which doesn't get reflected on existing conditions. So that was my concern about a possible swell bypass. Um, you know, we'll continue to see things as they come through, um, and kind of go from there.
What were you going to say about pine?
Uh, so understand that, you know. When you break that water to the left side or the right side, it water flows downhill. Once it gets down into a defined bed and banks, which is a stream by the state of Pennsylvania, that's waters of the Commonwealth. We don't know it, we can't touch it, it's there. So, you know, your pond is your last ditch effort on your property, what you can do. And, and Gateway has reviewed the numbers and they are releasing at a reduced rate. If, if the township private property owners, public property owners choose to do stuff beyond that point, that's on those private public property owners. The, the stormwater as designed um, by Mr. Victor meets our current town ordinance of released rate. In volume a- and that's, you know, what you can do, whether I drop it on the left side or the right side. It's still going to end up down at that valley in Pine Creek. And as, and I appreciate the, the four thousand acre watershed, that was a very um, good slide to add in there because it does show. You know, the, the entire Pine Creek Valley is an issue. We know it's a stormwater issue there. Yes, we can all sit in layman's terms and say, we're adding more water to that area. But if I drop a glass of water there now, it will end up there, either way, whether it falls off the right side or the left side, it's going to end down in Pine Creek Valley.
Well, the difference is, the water today is going in the creek. Well, the difference is, the water today is going in the creek. And this is going in the creek after it goes through Vestal Field. So we're taking the water that's coming down the right side of the hill, that goes into retention and has a direct into the creek. So that's not going to affect the water table at Vestal.
But the retention is still holding back more water than it was existing there. And this is, we, you know, we can talk more about this, this is something we should talk to Gateway about, yes.
When you were, I think, following along that line, he could go to the slide with the as, please.
The blue arrows.
Yeah, the blue arrows.
Where the trenches are.
Yeah.
Streams.
So, so that, that trench in Pittsburgh terms, the dry creek, the wet creek, whatever. Is there an opportunity, if there's flow change or anything like that, for that to change, just as Mother Nature changes directions of these? Like, is there an opportunity, because right now it's making a jog up and over? Is there a reason why, you know, through nature, through an event, which we're having more and more of? That those areas wouldn't come straight, a straight arrow instead of making that kick turn around? Is that a possibility, which would then have more effect of wetness and moisture on Vestal Park? You know, can you, I don't know, who, maybe Mr. Daisier Ross might be, if he's on, could answer that too, I don't know.
There, there's.
I'd love to let Dan answer this one.
You said it, Mother Nature is always, I don't know why we blame Mother Nature, but uh, instead of Father Nature, but uh. In school, they taught us, there's young streams, middle-aged streams, and an old stream. And after old stream, it becomes a young stream.
That's my fear.
Because it goes straight, starts to wiggle a little bit, creates these oxbows, and by then you get a whole bunch of those oxbows, now you got an old river, and boom, it's.
That's my fear right there, looking at that.
And it will.
Mm-hmm.
And it will. You changed it when you filled Vestal Park. When you did that, you changed the water course. It, it probably went straight, you brought it around us, and that's okay. You know, that sort of filling took place, and I think what we also should be looking at is the cross-sectional area of that unnamed tributary. Because it relates back to the volume question that I think Mr. Casey raised, was when, when we change this volume situation, ha- is that unnamed tributary, the trench, able to carry the volume of what we're proposing?
Mm-hmm.
We think it does uh by looking at the contouring, but that is certainly something that can be addressed at the time of the final plan.
Yeah, I think that's a major concern.
Yeah.
Right there.
I don't think it can.
Dan, was there anything that you wanted to add on Zoom?
Are you speaking to me?
Yes. Jason, hey, I asked if you had any specific thoughts on that.
Uh, on this, on here, Mr. Daisier Ross with Gateway Engineers, for any of us, anybody tuning in?
Yeah, the, the, the question was, will the stream uh change course and direction over time? The answer is yes, every stream does that. Uh, and we could probably expect this over time, and in ten years, this stream will look differently. I think the key that we have to understand is that we only have our stormwater ordinance to guide us. And we have a, we have a very strict ordinance, uh, this ordinance only allows a sixty percent release rate from the property, that's sixty percent of the pre-development, so this pond is very oversized. And uh it will control the rates as required, it'll do the infiltration as required. I think that, that, I, I thought that Jason brought up some excellent points. I think the key in this project is making sure that the grading that occurs when the homes are built, that the water gets directed to the systems, that's, that's where these plans all fall apart. Uh, and, and we will make sure of that, I mean, that's something that we'll work with inspections on. And um I think the idea of, of uh some sort of a reforestation plan along that slope, uh, those two things we learned uh are, are important uh from a, from a prior development in the town. So I think, I think that this plan can accomplish all of that. Uh, again, it's the follow-through uh a, a good set of plans and then making sure it gets built well in the field. That's it for me.
Hey, Dan, to your point, I recently went up to Vincentian Home and they have one of these beautiful swales. And the maintenance people around the property throw their grass clippings, and they throw hedges, and they throw all their junk in it. So, uh, I know that this isn't your problem, but can we firm things up with the uh HOA to make sure?
Sure, sure, Jack, that's a good point. Uh, every, now, now we have operation and maintenance agreements. So uh we'll be able to enforce making sure that the systems all function properly in the future. That's a problem with a lot of our older ponds, that we haven't had the ability to do that. Uh, so with this plan, we'll be able to especially make sure that it's functioning uh because of the impacts it may have to other people.
Just to piggyback off that next, Mr. Victor, make sure we, we add maintenance of that yard swale into the O and M.
I prefer to note, thank you.
And how, how, how deep are those trenches?
Uh, typically at about eighteen inches, they're not, they don't have to be deep. It's just getting the water that would sheet flow off of the backyard area. Because anything that's coming off the house is in the downspouts, is in a pipe, and we carry it via pipe to there. So we're just talking about the lawn area, just to make sure that that comes down there, turns left, goes into the inlet as opposed to going over the lip. Is what we're talking about, and that's easy to do, and with eighteen inches.
Thank you. Any further questions from council?
I probably have about ten more questions, but I'd like you to stick around afterwards so we can have a discussion, I don't want to beat this dead horse anymore. Can do.
Are we at the point we want to? Table thing though, do we wait for a final, do we send it back with the issues with the landscaping? And what we pointed out, should we wait to, it goes back to planning commission?
Well, so, the, the modification request thing, you know, was something that was new that came up tonight, however. If, as the town attorney is suggesting, that's something that can be held off until the final call. And there's no use in going back to.
It eventually will when the final plan is filed, like, it'll go off through planning commission again and percolate up through the process to you all.
If you want to look at that approval, you know, approving the modification of us at this stage, then we can send it back.
We would have to, yeah, so I don't think we need to do that now.
Does our township engineer agree with that assessment? Does he still?
Yes. Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Sure.
But having heard that suggestion this evening, we uh respectfully, and we'll do it in writing tomorrow, withdraw our modification at the time of this, the preliminary, and we will uh address that at the time of the final plans in the middle. It would be very helpful if you would act on the final plan, uh, only because it tells us heading in the right direction. And that we then can release our engineer to go hard with the uh final plans and with our NPDES plans and permitting as well, so.
Clarify, replay, you said back of the final.
Preliminary.
Okay.
Yeah, preliminary, yeah, I'm sorry, if I said finally.
Yes.
Approving.
It's a preliminary, it is late, I don't know where your clock is these days. There it is.
If council would approve the preliminary plan tonight, you are not acknowledging, agreeing to anything until the final plan comes. It's as Mr. Victor said, you're basically giving them the nod that, yeah, it, 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 it's something that you may want to consider releasing all of your professionals at full bore to de- design this. Um, Gateway has a lot of comments in their letter, um, many of them were not going to be addressed and can't be addressed until there's a final plan, so. Um, there're more, a lot more to come on this, I think, but this is just the first step to give the developer at least some uh, uh assurance that you're going to give it a good card look if they decide to invest the time and money.
And the, the motion, as it's written on the agenda, was prepared in, you know, the staff report that's attached, that's where we have all the contingencies, as to if there are any further uh available to people. And the main contingency in that staff report is that all of the items that were in the final letter must be addressed, they must provide the information to evaluate that. I'm sure that you were going to do that anyway, however, it's been few footprints in writing, so they don't have it out there. And so that is part of the staff.
We certainly have watched uh and received many Gateway review letters, and we appreciate that, that they have clarified. Here are the items that, basically a checklist, when you come back in with the final, make sure you do these points.
Any further questions? Do you have a motion?
I will make a motion.
We will get it.
You'll get that out.
You'll get an opportunity to speak. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision land development application for the Ridge Residential Plan submitted by the Ridge Pittsburgh LP located on Perry Highway, block lots one thousand seventy-one dash E dash two fifty-one, one thousand seventy-one dash E dash two seventy-two, and one thousand seventy-one dash J dash two five-three, contingent upon all items being addressed in the final plans submitted as identified in the planning and development staff report dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, as well as a few additional items that were noted here this evening. Can we add that to that, or is that not possible? That's what I just did. That's the motion.
Okay.
Doctor.
I thought there, I could second. Okay. Any further comment from council? And uh any further comment by Mark Pellic? Whoever would like to come forward, please.
Person, Helen Stiles, Oak Ridge Drive. I just want to say, I, I understand what he's saying, the developer goes through all these plans to come up with some strategy to get rid of this water. But, you know, as you see from all these other developments, twenty to thirty years down the lane, you know, people are having tree roots and things coming into their pipes. They, they call in a plumber, they reroot it. You go, you can see it coming out on their lawn, going out to the street, go out in various places. Who's to say these people aren't going to do that, right? So, you know, you can, you can do this now, make these plans now, but I'm just saying, um, it's going to change. I can pretty much tell you now, after seeing all these other subdivisions, it's going to change. So, you know, what we see now and what he proposes isn't necessarily how it's going to be going in the future. Something to keep in mind. Um, the other thing I was thinking, um, I don't know if anyone else brought this up, but um, the neighbor that was behind me on Forest View, and one of the ones in Oak Ridge, they've all been complaining about this photographer, it's been coming in their backyards, um, taking pictures from Forest View um toward Oak Ridge, looking at that site as a possible road to go behind Oak Ridge down to the site. And I'm just concerned that this person, whoever is doing this, is still trying to um buy this property and has plans on putting that road behind all our houses. And I just want to know who that is that's doing that and what's going on here.
Could it possibly been someone that is looking at degradants and looking at tree buffers to try to?
You didn't have a photographer there, huh?
Mr. Victor, welcome to his car.
We, we have not, the developer line representing, we have not, we have not had any discussions about that. However, the current property owner, Mr. Marwah, has in the past uh engaged our firm to investigate those various things. We never came out and took photographs. We basically said it, it wasn't possible, but I know he has pursued it. He may be, be, may be the one who's doing it, I have no idea, but I can tell you uh all of the rights to the property for developing are owned by my client right now, and with approval of the subdivision, he will buy it. And that question of anybody coming through there is gone. It's not, it's not something we have pursued.
It's not part of the plan.
It's not, it's not part of it, but I'm pretty sure it's, it's Marwah, because I think uh uh one of the guys that lives there actually has a family member that knows Marwah. So this is, this is happening, and it's kind of annoying when they come first thing in the morning and they think nobody's up, and they're, they're taking pictures. People actually see them out there in the property taking pictures.
Thank you, Miss Stiles.
Yeah.
Uh, if we can respond, um, okay. Okay, um, sir?
Well, I'm going to beat the same horse again, I did last time I was on here.
And for the record, I'm going to ask you, thank you.
Tell me sorry. I might be able to add a little insight to the problem that you're having at Vestal Field with the water runoff. Now, if you put the, yeah, well, that's. Slide up with the air.
Tranches.
Now. One of the comes down Sarver Lane, ends up going down that trench along with all the water that's coming down nineteen. Now, that manhole that they're talking about tying in, just for history fact, it doesn't really make any difference to what's going on right now. That manhole that's there, what did Sarver himself had the house where the substation is now? And he got in a lot of trouble from Pendott for putting it there, tying Sarver's water into it, which ended up wrapping around getting on that property. But then, I assume it's my grandfather did, it's now Pendott's property, so. Pendott did not put it in, but they now assume usage of it. That's Sarver's, along with tying in Sarver Lane into it to get it out of this hot, this hot set that's where all this water dumping right now. Now, a few years ago, when they increased the efficiency of the uh stormwater up on the flats, they apparently picked up some springs and so forth. So that's a constant running water down there now, not only runs the, the stormwater off of nineteen up there, but they, they made, increased their efficiency, and they gathered together, brought it down. And they, by sending it down there, put it across that same private property that I'm talking about, you're going to send this water to. You're going to put that water in that manhole that Sarver built, it's going to tie into the Pendott system. So it'll come right back on, on West Penn Powers property. Now, when that development was made more efficient up on the flats, that's when your problem started vesting. That's when the water level became a problem at Vestal, it's only three, four years of, of a problem. I agree with the flood plain, the hundred-year flood plain. It flooded my backyard during either. I can see, um, they're pretty accurate on that flood plain, because it came up my backyard pretty much right where the line was. So the flood plain is accurate. The problem you're having at Vestal now is new. And it's since they increased the flow coming out onto West Penn Powers property. And that happened, how many years ago, they did flats, three, four years ago? That's, that's when that problem got increased to the point that it was an issue at Vestal. Now. This water being added to it is going to increase that problem. You're going to have more problems with vessel, because the, the water that's coming down there is seeping into the ground. It's not coming back from Pine Creek, as far as I can see. Maybe some of it is, but as far as I can see, the problem got worse. When the light poles started falling over recently, that's from the water that's going into West Penn Powers property. So, just, just for a little more insight, that I have from living right next to that property for the last forty-five years. Now, I, I knew that Sarver had put that manhole in, and he got in a lot of trouble for it, but that's, that's seventy-seven years ago. So, that's not an issue as far as them adding water into that, because Pendott has, has accepted it. Problem is, this water has increased in the last four years, and it's going to increase again. So the problem you got increased in the last four years is going to increase again. Now, I've heard something new that I didn't know about, about this new design of the retention pond, leaving stagnant water until it seeps into the ground. I agree that seeping in the clay and the rock doesn't go that fast. Is this going to be a stagnant water issue? For me, living right below it, right close to it. It's a new issue that I just learned tonight, didn't know anything about. So then I had discussed with them at the other meeting, planners meeting, about the salt runoff.
I'm sorry. Thank you. And, and as always, you can always also send a letter to council and to the planning commission as well. We appreciate your comments tonight, thank you. Any further comments from the public? Anything online? With that, um, remove to vote. Um, those in favor of granting the preliminary subdivision application, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
Ms. Schreger?
Sorry, aye, I couldn't get them.
Something we may need a more call?
More call, um, word two?
No.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
No.
Word six? Aye. Word seven?
Aye.
Three, two.
Motion carries. Thank you. And we're, um, moving on to a bond reduction request. It's great, this is a housekeeping item, we have these routinely, um, the plan has moved and progressed. Gateway has reviewed the bonds and is recommending a reduction, um, with a carrying amount until the final site work is completed. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, any questions?
Uh, question for Dan, Dan, are you there?
I'm here, yes.
Um, I know this is part of the overall, um, project down there at this property. Um, this will basically close out the stormwater for this part. And the other phases of development will still tie into the stormwater. Will they be required to bond the stormwater, any part of the stormwater going forward? Or how will that be part of that bonding? Um, since the final stormwater is done, but their construction stormwater will go on. Do we have enough water in there in case, you know, God forbid, the erosion sedimentation on phases three and four fails, contaminates the stormwater pond, do we have money in there? Is what's remaining enough in case of that?
Well, that's, they're all great questions, Jason, and you and I think alike, because I asked, I asked the same questions about the future phases of the development. And what I've been told, uh, well, number one, we, we will bond those second and third phases of the development. Yeah, the ponds, uh, will, uh, they, they will not be used for erosion and sedimentation control. They'll have to do their own E and S controls on phases two and three alone. Uh, they're all participants in the operation and maintenance of the pond. So again, we have a stormwater agreement with them on that. So, um, to answer your question, it'll be addressed. It's just, it's, it's a little, it's a little bit odd. Uh, the sites all graded, so really the only action that's going to occur is really just stormsores and, and paving and, and final landscaping on those second and third phases. So there's never, no heavy dirt going on.
I, I just, I just have a little bit of concern that, you know, the NPDS won't close out until, especially the stormwater part of the NPDS won't close out until all the phases are done.
And they're actually going to close it out on this one. We're going to ask them, we're going to still hold their 50,000 until we get verification that the, uh, that they've closed out the notice of termination on the, on the permit.
Will they take over the pond ownership in O N M at that moment?
It, it, it'll be on by the, the, the overall, uh, I guess they'll have like a sort of a, uh, an HOA there for that commercial development. So they'll all be participants in it.
And that will take effect after they close out this part or that will take effect at the end of the NPDS?
It, it has to, it'll, it'll happen after they close out this first phase because at that point they're going to close out their permit.
Okay, thank you.
The other two, the other two sites are less than, less than, you know, the acreage to, to require the full permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Any comment from the public? Hang on, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bond reduction request number four submitted by Condon and Real Estate Companies for the McCann Square Phase One Senior Living project in the amount of $500,242.30 as recommended by the town engineers review letter dated June 22nd, 2022.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Finally, um, we have a resignation. Um, if you, anybody want to represent the environmental advisory committee in presenting this?
Sure.
I can, I can let you know that this is, he's resigning due to, um, other commitments. And he'll be, his position, his opening will be bumped into the renewals for the standard filling of, of the positions for this committee that are happening at the end of July.
Again, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Bernstein for his time served on the environmental advisory committee. We appreciate your service to the town. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of John Bernstein from the environmental advisory committee.
Second.
Any further comment from council? Anything from the public? Hang on, uh, all in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And I would like to invite if any of the public has comments on any non-agenda items, if you would like to please step forward. Anyone online? And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn, second.
Ms. Schreger? All in favor of adjournment, respond by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. And I hope you all have a good evening.